Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just to give a quick two-second introduction for those of you joining us tonight because we normally don't have such a large audience. Tonight, we're doing our tax levy hearing, which takes a few minutes, and then we'll proceed on to the regular meetings. So I'm sure you're all here to see your wonderful students perform. So if you bear with us, they'll be onstage in a couple of minutes. Now, I'd like to open the floor if anyone has any public comments on the tax levy. Do we have any public comments this evening? Okay, there being no public comments, we move on to the levy. Mr. Rogers has the flu, so he's joining us virtually. Thank you.
I will say this saddens me to miss my favorite day of the year is the tax levy hearing. And it's also weird that I'm on this giant 140-inch screen behind all of you. So I'm going to go quickly go through the tax levy presentation and just highlight a couple of the key points just for our taxing body members because there's a lot of fun stuff coming up on the agenda that I don't want you guys to miss. So just as a recap, the levy notice is published on December 1st in the paper, and that adhered to the timeline of no more than 14 and no less than seven days. If approved tonight, the levy will be filed at the Lake County Clerk's office this week. And just a reminder that we are being under a tax cap district. We are limited to 5% CPI law. Currently at 6.5%. Historically, you can see how high we've been the last couple of years, and right now we're trending at about 3.7% for this upcoming levy year. And the only other slide I was going to point out is the most important one is what we're requesting is the shaded blue area. That's what we are asking from the public. But the yellow is the best guess levy that we have, and that's what we're basing all of our future projections on. And also, being conservative, we're still budgeting in, you know, about 2% to 3% growth for future revenue purposes, even though CPI is still relatively higher and above that. So again, this saddens me, but this is the quickest levy hearing ever. Is there any questions that we have? Apparently, I thought I was sharing my screen, so I'm sorry about that as I was going through the slides. This is working out great.
It's okay. I think the board can follow. Did anyone have any? Oh, you're fine. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, then we will move on. We now have public comments again on any non-agenda items for the levy hearing. Do we have any public comments this evening? Okay, and then I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn from the levy hearing.
Mr. Candela? Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Bayless? Yes. Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Houghton? Yes.
Mrs. Bayless, just let me know when you're ready to take roll again. I know it takes a second. Okay. Calling to order the combined meeting for Diamond Lake School District 76. Roll call, please.
Ms. Angarola? Ms. Bayless? Here. Mr. Becker? Ms. Hale?
Here.
Mr. Houghton?
Here.
Mr. Candela? Ms. Sullivan? Here.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items for our combined meeting agenda. Do we have any public comments? Okay, there being no public comments, we move on to what everyone's been patiently waiting for, which is our presentations.
Yes, much to Mr. Rogers' dismay, this is really our best day of the year because we get to see students perform at the board meeting and share with us all that they've been working on throughout the year. Before that, we're going to recognize one of our staff members for a diamond award. This month's award was for advocacy, so I'm going to have Ms. Bratton's principal, Dr. Erica Berger, come up. Are you bringing Polly with you, or is she resting today?
She's resting right now.
Okay, all right, so Dr. Berger. Feel free to say if she works.
Thank you so much for your kind words and for the nomination. It means a lot to me to be recognized for the work I do. I'm so proud of the work we all do at District 76 for our students, for the community, for the families, and it's a joy to work here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie, and I apologize, I missed smoke. Miss Smoke, I thought it was for advocacy, but we're doing focusing on this month.
Language class, we have learned body percussion, meaning snaps and claps and stomps to the instrumental version of Sleigh Ride. It's something that I teach the Fourth graders every year, and it's always a giant hit. So I thought going up, maybe the board. So here are some blades holes that came out tonight to perform it for all of you. Thank you, everyone. We're going to come back over here. So now looking to the lady choir.
Hi, everybody. This is a group of seventh, eighth, and sixth grade. We had mostly seventh and eighth, and then we got some sixth graders in here, too. They're going to be singing Jingle Bell Rock, which was their closer on their choir concert. Every concert, we do one song that all the grades learn that they get to sing together at the end. So this was our closer this year for our December concert, and they volunteered to come sing it again. Sorry, we take the most time to that. Oh. Okay, awesome. So everybody who you see here tonight volunteered to be here, like Dr. Sharmal said. So we actually have two little short songs that we're going to play for you. The first one we're going to do is Jingle Bell, and then the second one we're going to do is Deck the Hall. I asked them if it was okay if I played with them because I realized I have not performed in probably six years. I'm always behind the podium. So I was like, it's time for me to come and join these guys and play with them. And they were very gracious and told me I could come and play with them. So our first piece that we're going to play tonight is Jingle Bells. They got that music, some of them yesterday, and some of them got it on Thursday. So they put that together with two rehearsals, right, guys?
Yeah.
That's how awesome they are. Two rehearsals. Yes.
I know. It was great. Okay, now that the very fun part of our agenda is over, we will move on to our business agenda. We have four items up for action this evening. The first item for action is the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board members, staff, administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda items A through D as listed. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Yes.
Ms. Candela? Ms. Bayless? Yes? Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion is approved. The next item up for action is personnel. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have two new hires and one resignation. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Ms. Bayless? Yes? Ms. Sullivan? Yes? Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Houghton?
Yes.
Ms. Candela?
Yes.
That motion is approved. Now, moving on to the tax levy, hopefully Mr. Rogers is still watching. May I have a motion to approve? And there's going to be six items, so don't get too excited yet. The truth in taxation resolution, the 2023 tax levy in the following amounts, for which the total is $16,687,564. The resolution for the working cash levy in the amount of $85,000. The resolution for the fire prevention and safety levy in the amount of $1,500. The resolution for the special education fund levy in the amount of $750,000. And the resolution for the CDAL IMRF levy in the amount of $6,064. May I have a motion to approve those six resolutions?
Ms. Sullivan? Yes? Mr. Houghton?
Yes.
Ms. Bayless? Yes? Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Candela?
Okay, that motion is approved. And then the last item for action this evening is the Canines for Comfort Agreement. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lakes School District 76 Board of Education approves the recommendation from the district to enter into the Canines for Comfort Agreement. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Okay. Ms. Candela? Yes? Ms. Sullivan? Yes? Ms. Bayless? Yes? Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Houghton? Yes.
Yay, Polly.
Polly!
Okay, that wraps up our business agenda. Moving on to board discussion, did we have any items for board discussion? You wanted to do those under others, right?
Yes, if that's okay.
Yeah, of course. Having no items for our discussion, we'll move on to the Freedom of Information requests. It looks like there were three, and they were responded to. Moving on to notices and communications. We have quite a few. We have quite a few from CDAL. It looks like Val Donin is retiring.
At the end of the year.
And then we have quite a few fun highlights as well. I don't know if there's anything you want to highlight there.
Nothing out of the ordinary, except for we have our Woe is Word video that's attached, as well as our Sparkle Spotlight for the, excuse me, for the staff members who demonstrated exceptional advocacy this month. We also have our November moment of the month, and I should describe to you what this is, since it's a collage of staff members. So we had our institute day on November 21st, where we had our state superintendent come and give a keynote, share a little bit about his story and some of his priorities for his job and position of where he wants to take the state of education. And then we had Dr. Orzal come back for a second time, and she talked about courageous conversations and having conversations with staff members, with families, with administrators, and just how to be an effective communicator. But one of the things that Dr. Sanders said earlier was just taking time for yourself and making sure that because work will always be there, and some of the lessons that he's learned about his own health and well-being. So Dr. Orzal let us out 30 minutes early, and what I had shared with the staff is that you needed to go home at one. You couldn't go home. You had to from 1:30 to 2:00 because they had until 2:00. Do something for yourself, whether that was with a colleague or by yourself or catching up on something. And I said, in the first 10 people to send me what they were doing, get a prize. So I had 33 staff members send me what they were doing, which I was super impressed with. But these were some of the things that we can share, so they went out. For a beverage, we had some shoppers. We had some people that went out for elotes. We had some smoothies. So as you can see, we have a really cohesive staff that took some time to take care of themselves right before Thanksgiving. that took some time to take care of themselves right before Thanksgiving. So just wanted to share that with you, where that collage came from.
That's so nice. Okay, and moving on to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Being that we have no longer have an audience, I'm guessing there are no public comments or petitions on non-agenda items. So then we will move on to others.
All right, I spoke a little bit about this, and I know this was in our weekly update, but if you recall, about two years ago, we had applied for the Full Service, the Full Service Community Schools Grant. And Daisy Carrera, our community liaison, and Mr. Rogers, and myself, and the principals, you know, put together some focus groups to do some interviews, and I believe some of you were part of that, as well as some of our B-PAC members, DLT members, and some staff and students. And so we didn't get it last year. We missed it by just a couple of points. And then we were surprisingly awarded this grant this year. We just got word about two weeks ago, and so we just put the abstract in there for you. We don't have all of the details yet. If you look, we are about $2.7 million a year for the next five years. We share that with North Chicago. We're the only two districts in Lake County that receive this grant. So it is a federally, it is a federal grant. We will have site supervisors, as well as kind of a district liaison that'll oversee the whole process. So as we get more information, we'll share it with you. We just put in, like I said, the abstract and the information that came from the government of how we got this grant. One of the first steps to do is to post the position of site supervisors, who's going to be on each building site overseeing the grant, and how does that support social, emotional health and well-being. And so we're going to learn, we're going to build this plan while we fly it. So we don't know, there's no guidelines kind of given to us right now, but we're going to continue to meet, and Eric and I are kind of the liaisons with Myra, who is from the College of Lake County, as well as Sammy, our community liaison, to work with our community partners. So we wanted to share that with you. We're really excited about that. So you'll see those postings go up in the next couple of days. As well as, one of the things that we wanted to be proactive about is start posting the openings that we know are happening for elementary teachers, bilingual teachers, special ed teachers, just with the recent education and teacher shortage. We wanted to be proactive and hopefully get some December grads. And if people are interested and they're qualified, we can get them to start to be subs in our, in our district and maybe incentivize them to work for Diamond Lake sooner. So we just want to share that with you, that even though we don't have official openings for all of the positions, we will be posting many of them tomorrow to get a head start on things for the fall.
That was very exciting.
All right, yeah, we're really excited about that, so we'll keep you posted.
Fantastic.
And we also are going to put some, you know, we're going to share it out with the community next week. We didn't put the dollar about exactly what we're getting, because we don't have that yet, but then hopefully in January, put together a community-focused group, and people have ideas or things they want to share, things that they've seen, they can share those ideas with us.
That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Okay, well, surprisingly, this is going to be a quick meeting. Before we adjourn, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, enjoy your winter break. We'll see you all again in January. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Candela?
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Houghton?
Yes.
And on that note, we have two birthdays that were celebrated in the last few days. Mrs. Hale was on Friday, and Mr. Fryberger was yesterday, so happy birthday to... Is it Sagittarius? Are you guys Sagittarius?
Oh, yeah.
Our two Sagittarians, okay. So have a wonderful evening, everybody. Thank you.
At least I got a bunch of stuff for us.
Really, I mean...